Everyone and welcome to the ninth meeting of the Honolulu different commission. We're gonna move right into the public hearings, calling agenda item number one, application number two, two dash two, three, five, seven, eight from the Shamrock Restaurant LLC DBA, the Black Shamrock Tavern, Mr. Zibaka, Zibaka.
Chair Vice Chair Members of the Commission, Manuel Zibaka on behalf of the Shamrock Restaurant Group LLC DBA, the Black Shamrock Tavern. I, my client that we would be requesting continuance today, so he is not present at the moment, but I am the authorized agent and able to act on this. Application. After discussion with the administration, I would like to request this matter be continued with the public hearing kept open for as many days as necessary for the commission to provide a updated letter so we can provide an amended mailing to the additional. State voters.
Thank you, Mr. Zibaka.
Thank you, Madam interim Chair of the Commission. This matter, the public hearing on this matter was initially scheduled for the June ninth setting, which was canceled to have the applicant republish notice and redo the mail out to include registered voters. This matter was subsequently continued from the August eighth, August eleventh and August twenty fifth meetings. Public hearing kept open to allow the applicant to address issues that were identified in the second supplemental report, which is previously been distributed. The conclusion of administration will stand by the conclusion drawn in the second supplemental report. I'll also state for the record that a summary of the April fourteenth preliminary hearing testimony was provided to interim chairmen and commissioner Buckley prior to the new public hearing date. Further, that Commissioner Buckley was not in attendance for the August fourth and August eleventh meetings, but no public testimony was offered and received on at either meeting. Finally, I will note that we will need to continue to a date certain, so if it's necessary for us to recess to compute those numbers and take it the better of later in the hearing, we'll do so.
We can move this to later on to give the commission some time. Or we can do the continuance now. But if we if we can do it today, I'd rather see if we can get it done today.
So I have two days that we pushed out. If the continuance was to go for thirty days as of today, it would be October sixth, but it's my impression that the administration would like to have a minimum of forty-five day comment period, which would push us out to the October twenty seventh hearing. The that would allow for an additional six days for the administration to provide the letter of notice between now and six days forward to meet that forty-five day requirement if we were to go to the twenty-seven. Those are the numbers that I currently have, but I defer to the commission, the administration's preference.
That's all right. You wanna want us to move this in the agenda so you guys can find a date?
Well, I guess the issue is if we if it's continued to October twenty seventh and is later discovered that we are short days, which I don't believe there would be, we would appear again on October twenty seventh, we would have to continue to get those additional days of the forty-five days established by statute in terms of, because my understanding is the applicant's intent is to mail to those registered voters to bring his numbers up to that required minimum percentage.
So it looks like the October twenty seventh date is probably the safest, correct?
Other than that, if you could address pick up item number six, then have the applicant maybe step outside and talk to investigator Sato.
Okay.
And just sort of sort of firm up that second number, then it can be brought back later on in the agenda.
Okay, so I'm what I'm hearing is with table, table agenda item number one. And then move to agenda item six, and then we can dispose of one after you folks have had a discussion, Mr. Zibaka, is that okay? All right, calling agenda item number six, request number two, three dash zero, zero, four, seven, two from the Shamrock Restaurant LLC DBA, the Black Shamrock Tavern, Mr. Zibaka again, please.
Well, Chair Vice Chair Members of the Commission, Manuel Zibaka on here on behalf of the Shamrock Restaurant Group LLC DBA, the Black Shamrock Tavern. This request is a follow-up from the recent continuances that we've had additionally to reallocate some of the days on the first temp, sorry, the second temporary license that weren't used due to COVID related logistic issues. The total number of days requested is for the extension of the second temporary license is going to be twenty-nine days. And that is the combination of the two continuances as well as the, I'm sorry, three continuances as well as the unallocated.
And of the eight unused days that you're asking to apply to this second temporary license, any of the unused days due to being shut down for violations? Any question or type of action?
You know, questions, motion will be to approve request number two, three, zero, zero, four, seven, two, second.
Then move then second it to approve request number two, three, dash, zero, zero, four, seven, two, all in favor? I also vote I request is granted. All right, and we'll, we'll we can hear back from you when number one back on the agenda, okay? All right. Calling agenda item, moving into special license applications, calling agenda item number two, application number two, three, dash, zero, zero, two, six, eight from Events International Inc. Mr. Schneider, nice to see you.
Nice to see you as well.
Been a long time.
Yeah, we're back in business, for sure.
Good for you. I'm happy to hear it.
Yes, Rick Schneider, CEO of Events International.
Right, and this is for Jim Beam Whiskey Affair event, and at Richard Street, that's the YWC, correct?
Correct. That's actually Kathy. The whole.
Yes. Okay, why don't you walk us through your event, give us some details?
This is actually a private event for industry members that our client is is being sent to, and this is something they do for members of the serving their clients and customers.
And no minors in attendance, correct?
No, it's also only going over.
Commissioners, any questions or type of action?
That's one of the questions, Mr. Schneider, if I missed it, I'm sorry, but is food being served as well?
Excuse me.
Is food being served at the event?
Oh, absolutely.
And then, given the time period and the nature of the event, is there going to be any options for guests or attendees to take it over or have right sharing or some?
Some, we always provide that, so we always make sure that that they know their call, but most people actually don't. But we we advise it, obviously. This is probably going to be more of a roving event in the sense that we're not going to see the entire guest count at one time. People will come through, they'll, you know, they'll do their networking and so I would say that at any given time, I don't think it would be important seventy percent of the total number of guests.
It sort of addresses my implied concern is that someone consuming alcohol for six hours might have a problem. If you expect them roving.
It's it's highly unusual that somebody's going to be there.
Got it. Thank you. Motion be to approve application number two, three, dash, zero, zero, two, six, eight, second.
Then move then second into approve application number two, three, dash, zero, zero, two, six, eight, all in favor? I also vote I motion is carried, application is approved. Thank you, Mr. Schneider. Calling agenda item number three, application number two, three, dash, zero, zero, four, five, six from Hawaii Theater.
My name is Gregory Dunn. I'm the president and CEO of the historical Hawaii Theater. For you in support of our application, the Hawaii Theater turns one hundred years old this year. We're holding a centennial event in the theater on September the tenth, which will conclude with a three-hundred-person dinner on the street on Bethel Street fronting the theater. We received the street's closure permit from the city and county. And we're seeking to have a special event licensed to allow us to serve wine and light beverages to accompany the dinner that our guests will enjoy.
The centennial to Hawaii Theater, I have performed there and been to many performances there, so thank you for keeping it alive. I know that you folks had a difficult time during COVID, so it's nice to see folks having an event like this. Commissioners, any questions or type of action?
One question, didn't see it unless I misread it. Do you guys have a possibility of knowing how many minors might be in attendance?
We expect zero. This is a more of a major donor event. They'll tend to be an older audience.
Okay.
And sponsors as well as all good.
Thank you. It will be to approve on application number two, three, dash, zero, zero, four, five, six.
Then move then second into approve application number two, three, dash, zero, zero, four, five, six, all those in favor? Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote I motion is carried, application is approved. Looking Mr. Dunn, and good luck, have a great day. Moving on into temporary license applications, calling agenda item number four, application number two, two, dash, two, five, zero, seven, zero from Kyung E. Han DBA Gulik SJD Liquor and Grocery Store, Mr. Luke.
Yes, good afternoon. To my right is the operative Kyung E. Han. She has been in concert with Luke. We have no changes to the investigative report. For the record, she will be having training during the temporary period.
Ms. Han, you don't have any liquor service or sales experience? No experience.
Yeah.
Does she plan on hiring anybody that has experience?
She will have training during the period. Her husband will be helping her, and all with their advisor, Mr. Frank.
Okay. And Mr. Luke, please advise your client on the severity of consequences for selling to minors.
Sure.
Okay, and that they need to be checking IDs, they need to know how to check IDs to age verify, okay?
Thank you.
All right. Commissioners, any questions or type of action?
To approve application number two, two, dash, two, five, zero, seven, zero, second.
Then move then second into approve application number two, two, dash, two, five, zero, seven, zero, all those in favor? Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote I motion is carried, application is approved. Thank you. Good luck. We now to request calling agenda item number five, request number two, three, dash, zero, zero, four, four, four from Skybox Tap House.
Thank you for having me. I'm Jared Brown. I'm the bar manager at Skybox Tap House as well as Short Fire International Marketplace.
And I see you're requesting a waiver of rule three, dash, eighty-two, dash, thirty-eight point three in order to allow pre-me, pre-batching? Okay. Um, let's see, and you folks brought submitted a a list of all of the recipes and the drinks that you're proposing to pre-batch, correct?
Yep, and it should be broken down to the ABV and down to the ounce service size and all that. We have the the storage details on there and the service vessels and anything like that.
Okay. Um. My only concern here is the Jell-O shots. So we have approved them in the past for other licensees, but they have been limited in the amount that they can serve per day. So how much do you folks think, how many Jell-O shots do you think you're going to serve per day?
I only make about twenty-five on the weekends, like a Friday night, we'll make about twenty-five, Saturday night, twenty-five, throw away the leftovers at the end of the night.
Okay, okay, and that's around the same level that the other, the other licensees were approved for in the past as well, okay? And then other questions that we normally ask with this type of request is, are all of your bartenders trained to make every one of these drinks from scratch with big chef, exception of the Jell-O shots?
One hundred percent.
If asked by a customer.
Anybody knows how to make all those, yeah.
Okay, all right, and you folks are going to be doing a twenty-four-hour shelf life, I see, and dispose any excess after after the shift, correct?
That is correct, yeah.
Commissioners, do you have any additional questions or type of action here for Mr. Brown?
Brown is sort of reminding you that you are not allowed to serve someone who you believe is very soon intoxicated, so with respect to the Jell-O shots in particular, that also gave me some pause, so if you could advise your managers to monitor people who select that to be extra vigilant, I appreciate that.
Definitely, yeah, because that with the gelatin in there, it does take a little bit longer to get into your system and things like that, so we are hyper vigilant.
You know, and that reminds me of something, and it is something I've asked of other licensees that are doing Jell-O shots. Please have your servers, when they're serving the Jell-O shots, if there's a child or minor at the table, can they wait and have that person just take the shot there? Because having pieces of Jell-O sitting at the table with minors, we don't want them to be tempted to try it out.
Jell-O shots are only rolled out after ten PM, which is when it's all twenty-one and over.
Okay, great, thank you.
So I guess the question would be making the motion, do we need to list the total?
We can limit the total twenty-five.
Yeah, we can limit the total per day.
So our request will be, I mean, excuse me, motion will be to approve request number two, three, dash, zero, zero, four, four, four with the following verbiage conditions, that the Jell-O shots will be limited to twenty-five total per day. Second.
I've been moved then seconded to approve request number two, three, dash, zero, zero, four, 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 limiting it to twenty-five Jell-O shots per day. Any, I'm sorry, all in full of paper. Any objections and reservations? Hearing none, I also vote I motion is carried, request is granted. Thank you and good luck.
Thank you so much for your time.
You too. Can I have some action on, on item seven through fourteen, please?
What should be to, for adoption of finding of facts, conclusions of law, decision in order for agenda item number seven? And then my should be to for adoption of decision in order for items twenty-eight through fourteen inclusive.
Eight through fourteen. And move then second into prove the adoption of decision in order, finding of fact, for agenda item seven through fourteen inclusive. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote I, adoption of findings and fact decision in order are adopted. Moving on into adjudication, Mr. Jacob, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Daniel Jacob, Deputy Preparation Counsel on behalf of the City and County of Honolulu.
Calling agenda item number fifteen, seven, seven, seven Liquors Grocery and Gift Shop.
I represent for the commission that I did not have very much contact information with this licensee, and I was unable to get a hold of them.
Okay, do we have any, can you make a call if anybody's out there for agenda item fifteen? Is there anyone online that is appearing for agenda item fifteen, seven, seven, seven Liquors? Seeing no one online, Mr. Jacob, would you like to move for a default?
Commissioners, I will move for a default judgment. It does appear that service was provided to the licensees. That being noted, this case does involve selling to a minor. I'm not sure if the commission would want to see this licensee. So I wouldn't be offended if you denied my motion for default. Maybe the appropriate thing to do is right now is explain that this case does involve selling to a minor, specifically a violation pursuant to the rule. The rule subsection B that cited requires the licensee to adequately check the person's license. In this case, I believe an individual did not have a license, was sold liquor, liquor investigators approached the the individual later, asked him if he was twenty-one. Individual said, yes, he was twenty-one. Turns out he was not. That individual had a picture of an ID, I understand, on his phone, which I believe he had showed to the liquor licensee. Because the violation was charged under a rule, specifically subsection B, it is pursuant to that rule a first-time violation. However, the licensee does have previous violations of the statute that prohibits sales to a minor. This would be their third violation if the the statute was charged rather than the rule. The licensee also has a warning pursuant to this rule, but subsection A, which prohibits the sale of to minors, subsection B requires that they adequately check the license. So if if the commission ruled for default on this, my recommended fine would be one thousand dollars, because it is a first-time violation. However, my recommendations are only recommendations, and because this licensee has a history of similar behavior, and although it wasn't charged under the same statute, it is the same substantive violation. So so I'm not real sure if you guys would want to hear from the licensee in this case. I will ask that the default be entered. However, I would not be upset if you guys just denied that and rescheduled this and and made the licensee a purport for you.
Hearing you won't be offended or upset. My inclination is to continue this.
Okay.
If we do continue, will your office attempt service again?
Yes, I believe usually I think initial services is physically made and then subsequent services through email. Of course, myself and my peer reach out to these licensees. We can try a little bit more, you know, to see if we can find other avenues to reach them. But you know, you could also default them and issue a fine above my recommendation as well, if you'd like.
I'm just concerned about due process concepts, Mr. Jacob, so before we go that far, when you said there's physical service, what means is, what means are you?
My understanding is that this document that I have right here, it's a copy of the back, so a notice of the hearing is physically served upon the licensee, and then someone accepts that. That that is served physically by a liquor commission investigator.
So we know that someone did.
Yes, in this case, they did receive service of tonight's notice of hearing.
Okay.
And so default would be appropriate if the commission so choose.
And what for Mr. I, if with the commission entertains a request with default, can we continue the penalty phase subject to notice to the licensing?
Yes, you've done that before in in other instances with an accepted plea, where the penalty phase has been lit out and heard later.
Another option, of course, is you, you could enter a motion of default, continue the case for imposition of the discipline, and at that time, if the licensee wanted to ask for a motion to set aside that default, that would be of their, they could request that, and you guys so choose to set that side, set aside that default.
What if well, well, a motion to accept the request for a default as to agenda item fifteen, subject to continued hearing on the penalty phase of the next available hearing day.
Second, then to prove a default judgment and to continue the penalty fees to the next available hearing date for agenda item fifteen, all those in favor? Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote I motion is carried, default judgment is entered, and we will continue this matter for the penalty fees. I'm calling agenda item sixteen, Alawai Service. Please introduce yourself.
Ken.
And you are the?
Sorry, I didn't hear last. Yonni Mitsu, thank you. Mr. Jacob, do you read the charge, please?
Honor about December fourth, twenty twenty-one, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee failed to display within the liquor sales area of the licensed premises a shelf price for each size of each brand of liquor sold in violation of rule three, dash, eighty-two, dash, thirty-six point one of the rules of the liquor commission of the city and county of Honolulu.
Mr. Yonni Mitsu, how would you like to plead? I'm going to accept the plea.
Second. And move then second it to accept the no contest plea for agenda item sixteen. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote I the no contest plea is accepted.
Mr. Jacob, what is your recommendation?
This is a first-time violation. The recommended fine is one hundred dollars. Licensee did receive a warning on November twentieth, twenty twenty-one. The facts of this case involve a one-glass-door beverage cooler with at least thirty liquor products that were not found in the price.
It said, do you have any comment or explanation? You don't have to, but my my one comment is if you're provided a warning a month before, why wasn't it fixed and has the issue been resolved?
It's been resolved. I depend on vendor to do somewhat of pricing and whatever happens, it still involves.
Mr. Jacob, the recommended fine is one hundred dollars.
Correct.
Motion to approve the recommended by one hundred dollars for agenda item sixteen.
And move then second into approve the recommended fine of one hundred dollars for agenda item sixteen. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote I motion is carried, the fine is approved. Thank you, Mr. Yonni Mitsu. Calling agenda item seventeen, Alohe Lani Waiki Beach Resort.
Madam Chair, I'll be making a disclosure on that IOW does represent employees at the Alohe Lani Resort. I am not the employer, employees' direct representative, and this will not affect my ability to be impartial in deciding on this matter.
Thank you, Commissioner Hollinger. Hi, good afternoon.
Hi, good afternoon. Ms. Hira representing, or Christina, oh, sure. Sorry, Christina, you're representing the licensee, and to my left is Chase Hu, the food and beverage manager, his last name is we waive the reading of the charge presented to eighteen and nineteen.
Okay, we'll take them one at a time. Is there here, how does your claim wish to plead the charge, I'm sorry, the eighteen?
No contest.
Motion to accept the plea.
Thank you.
Then move then second into accept the no contest plea for agenda item seventeen. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote I the no contest plea is accepted.
Mr. Jacob, what's your recommendation?
This violation occurred on December fourth, twenty twenty-one, where the licensee permitted entertainment, which caused complaints from the public and was found to cause undue disturbance, obstructing the peace and quiet of the neighborhood in violation of rule three, dash, eighty-four, seventy-eight point oh-three sub D. It's first-time violation, recommended fine is five hundred dollars. The licensee, however, did receive a warning on February twentieth, two thousand and nineteen.
Mr. Yonni?
So, and we'll probably speak generally about all three, if that's okay. So these, and I realize it looks like there are a lot of violations in a short period of time, but I think, you know, Leroy had explained to us, they had some issues getting these out during COVID, so if you notice the dates, they are actually quite spaced apart. During the first two violations, there was a different beverage manager in place. We did feel like that she was ineffective in controlling noise. She has since then been removed from that position, and we have hired he used to work at Morimoto's as the director of operations, and since his taking over this position, there have been minimal complaints. We have excellent policies in place to address noise complaints. He's even on a group text with the Foster Cowers Association. We pregnant, so they can text him directly and correctly. Noise is now shut down at nine o'clock, is that right?
Yeah, between nine and thirty.
Yeah, nine and nine thirty.
I'm sorry, this was, this is based in the whole area, whole area, okay, yeah, all right.
And I do have to admit, so, you know, we do respect our residential neighbors, but when I did look at the time of when these violations were issued, like one of them was like at eight fifty, I'm getting another one was like just past nine AM, so these are not late-night ragers. These are, you know, what would be considered to be normal operating hours, but still, we do respect the, you know, our residential neighbors, and we're trying to keep it down, but I just want the commission to keep in mind, these weren't violations at, you know, ten, eleven, twelve AM, these were people calling at eight fifty.
And this was DJ music, not live music? You do have live music sometimes, okay, but in regards to agenda item seventeen, this was December fourth, two thousand and twenty-one, this was DJ music.
I believe so. I believe these all three were DJ related. I believe so. I believe these all three were DJ related.
If you, when did you take over that? When did you take over the food and beverage?
February 20th. So I'm Eric Food and Beverage Director for IG.
So Jacob, do you have in your files what day December 4th was and the time of the?
I have to check my phone to determine what day December 4th.
I was just thinking that.
But I can represent that. The complaint by the nearby resident came in at 8:41. Liquor commission investigators arrived at 9:09 and discovered the loud noise on the surface and all of that on the phone as well.
It's Saturday. It was on a Saturday night.
Under the circumstances, my motion is going to be to issue a letter of reprimand for agenda item 17.
And move then second it to issue a letter of reprimand for agenda item 17. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none. I also vote I motion is carried. A letter of reprimand will be issued for agenda item 17. Calling agenda item 18, Aloha Hilani Resort Waikiki Beach. Mr. Hollinger, Commissioner Hollinger again.
Yes, I'm madam chair. I'll be making a disclosure that ILW represents employees at the Aloha Hilani Resort Waikiki Beach. I'm not on the employee's direct representative, and this will not affect my ability to be impartial in deciding on this matter.
Thank you. Ms. Ohira.
Christina Ohira, representing the licensee. We waive the reading of the fine. To my left is the food and beverage director, Chase Hu.
Ask you to read the charge.
Oh, and we waive the reading.
How did you come wish to plead?
No contest.
Motion to accept the plea.
And move then second it to accept the no contest plea for agenda item 18. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none. I also vote I the no contest plea is accepted.
So Jacob, what's your recommendation?
This violation occurred on February 17th, 2022, when the licensee permitted entertainment which caused complaints from the public and was determined to be noise emanating, causing undue disturbance with that disrupted the peace and quiet of the neighborhood. This is also a first time violation, recommended fine is $500. Again, I note that the licensee received the warning on February 20th, 2019.
Have the time of this fighting.
The complaint was called in at approximately 2010 hours. I believe that's eight, eight ten. Liquor commission investigators arrived at 2027 hours, which I believe is eight twenty seven.
Thank you, Ms. Ohira. Any further comments?
No, no, not anything other than these two things.
And February 22nd was a Tuesday night. Or I'm sorry, I apologize. February 17th was a Thursday.
Ms. Ohira, one question. You reference Foster Towers to your numbers. Is that where the complaints are coming from?
I believe so. I don't think the investigators tell us, but I think he would.
Yes, the investigative report indicates that they did visit that facility, and that's where they determined it was too loud.
The fine of $250.
And second, it's a $250 fine for agenda item 18. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none. I also vote I $250 fine will be imposed. Calling agenda item 19, Aloha Hilani Resort Waikiki Beach. Commissioner Hollinger.
Again, Madam Chair, to be making a disclosure, the ILW does represent the employees at Aloha Hilani Resort Waikiki Beach. I am not the employee's direct representative, and this will not affect my ability to be impartial in deciding on this matter.
Thank you.
Christina Ohira, representing the licensee, we waive the reading of the charge. And to my left is food and beverage manager Chase Hu.
That is your claim wish to plead?
No.
Motion to accept the plea.
And move then second it to accept the no contest plea for agenda item 19. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none. I also vote I the no contest plea is accepted.
This violation occurred March 25th, 2027, 2022, when the licensee permitted entertainment which caused complaints from the public. And investigators later determined caused undue disturbance with that disrupted the peace and quiet of the neighborhood. This is licensee's first violation, recommended fine is $500. Again, note that the licensee received a warning on February 20th, 2019. I believe this night is a Friday. The call came in at, the complaint came in at exactly nine o'clock. Liquor investigators arrived at the scene at nine ten.
Ms. Ohira, any further comment?
No, not anything additional. But if you guys do have questions or anything for Chase Hu's here available to answer your.
Well, you know, I just wanted to say I do sympathize with you folks. This is Waikiki. You folks are trying to provide entertainment and fun for our visitors and come I not guests as well. You know, it is difficult because this also is right next to a couple residential buildings. So I I feel their pain as well. My suggestion, even it's only suggestion, is perhaps the bass, you know, if you're having a DJ in there turning down the bass because that tends to travel the furthest, that sound tends to travel the furthest. So if you have these complete, sometimes it tends to be people are closing their windows and they, every, all of the noise is gone except for. So if you guys can get that bass down a little bit more, I think that you have less of these problems. That's my only suggestion.
And this is tough for me to, given the location as Chairman has just described, also the time on a Friday. I don't. Self team, but I don't live there and I'm not.
There's a lot of noise going on, you know.
Right, I'm looking at the area and there are other places for entertainment right around these other towers. So like I said, I I do sympathize. This is Waikiki and that's why we're having, also receiving some leniency on it. But if we keep seeing these, you know, it's gonna get more and more difficult for us to show you that leniency.
We've done some some adjustments on the A as well as, you know, we had acoustics on certain nights. So, you know, it's been adjusted and those other needs that are not abiding by the rules. That will tell, we kind of, you know, working out.
Fact that you're on a group chat with the community.
Nice. Very close. They come then, it's freaking out. They have that full reader, I have my managers under this. Like a play like that. It's it's definitely relationship. It's definitely improved and we just had a concert recently and we kind of had a sit down with all the homeowners association from Foster Towers and we said, hey, this is, you know, we're doing a charity event. You wanna get back to community, you know, just give you heads up. And they're all cool with it. Sent out a letter. And then we even said, hey, we've been doing some tickets for those certain individuals that were complainers. And they gave away us rappers, so.
Well, I appreciate your extra effort in in making good with the community because I'm sure that I'm sure that they appreciate it as well.
So my inclination was to approve the recommended fine, but what I hear is good faith and proactive efforts to prevent this from happening again. My motion is going to be to approve, sorry, to impose a fine of $250 for agenda item 19.
And move then second it to approve a $250 fine for agenda item 19. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none. I also vote I motion is carried. A $250 fine will be imposed. Thank you, Ms. Ohira. Thank you, Mr. Yonni. Calling agenda item 20, 850, we were both.
And I'm Vice Chair. Members of the Honolulu Liquor Commission. And this all right, James H. Lee appearing for licensee Quenchal Inc. We waive reading of the charge. Appearing with me today is Mr. Richard Akimoto, President Quenchal Inc., who's doing business as P50, we were both.
Thank you.
I wish to plead.
I no contest.
Thank you, motion accept the plea.
I agree. Thank you.
And second it to accept the no contest plea for agenda item 20. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none. I also vote I the no contest plea is accepted.
Mr. Jacob, what's your recommendation?
This violation occurred on August 6th, 2021, when the licensee employed an individual who was not properly registered with the commission. It's a first time violation, recommended fine is $350. I'll note that a warning was issued to the licensee for the same reason on November 6th, 2019.
Really any comment or explanation?
Yes, well, Mr. Akimoto apologizes for this and that. He has reminded his managers to make sure that all of the employees are properly registered with the commission. Partying, having to find workers for the establishment, but he's making sure that he followed.
Motion to approve the recommended fine of $350 for agenda item 20. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none. I also vote I motion is carried. A $350 fine will be imposed.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Thank you, Mr. Akimoto. Item 21, 850, we were both. Mr. Lee again.
Yes, good afternoon, Vice Chairman, Vice Chair of this year, members of Honolulu Liquor Commission and this all right. James H. Lee appearing for licensee Quenchal Inc. We waive reading of the charge. With me today is Mr. Richard Akimoto, President of Quenchal Inc., doing business as P50, we were both.
How does your claim wish to plead?
No contest.
Motion to accept the plea.
Second.
And move then second it to accept the no contest plea for agenda item 21. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none. I also vote I the no contest plea is accepted.
This violation occurred on January 15th, 2022, where the licensee sought or or allowed a minor to consume alcohol on the licensed premises. This complaint was originated out of an anonymous complaint through the hotline of underage drinking. When investigators arrived, they determined that an individual who was not 21 was wearing a green wristband indicating that the individual was 21. The patron did not have an ID but provided information. HPD check later revealed it was incorrect birthday and that she was a minor. This is licensee's first violation, the recommended fine is 1,000.
Yes, Mr. Akimoto realizes the seriousness of this violation. He has reminded the staff to make sure that every customer visiting is carded and continues to provide training and reminders to his staff. I I believe.
The wrist, the wristband we we provide inside the center. But the servers are supposed to be checking the identification. When we asked the girl, we we let her go there, but she claimed that she had a, she had a ID. But, you know, Wendy, Wendy asked her, like, she says, oh, I don't, I don't have anything. At all.
Is it your standard policy to check IDs and then issue wristbands for people over 20?
We trained them to do that, you know. We have meetings every, twice a month, we, you know, on policies that, you know.
A motion to approve the recommended fine of $1,000 for agenda item 21.
And move then second and to approve the recommended fine of $1,000 for agenda item 21. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none. I also vote I motion is carried. The fine is approved. Thank you, Mr. Lee.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Akimoto. Calling agenda item number 22, Harbor Pub Inc.
Represented the commission that Wayne Loop represented, represents the licensee contacted me today, asked for continuance until September 22nd.
That that date is good, yeah.
Well, we just continue agenda item 22 to the September 22nd, 2022, and move on to the next agenda item.
Calling agenda item 23, Strip State Park.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Christopher Burman, representing the strip sales manager.
You said Christopher Brown?
Burman.
Burman.
Mr. Jacob, can you read the charge please?
Honor about December 14th, 2021, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii. Licensee failed to have a duly registered manager on active charge of the licensed premises. During the time, the establishment is licensed to sell or serve liquor in violation of rule 3-82-38.9 sub A of the rules of the liquor commission of the city and county of Honolulu.
Mr. Burman, how would you like? Thank you. Motion to accept the plea.
Second.
And move then second it to accept the no contest plea for agenda item 23. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none. I also vote I the no contest plea is accepted.
Mr. Jacob, what's your recommendation?
This is a first time violation, the recommended fines $500.
No, we do take full responsibility. I had just come back from maternity leave, did not realize that my license had expired or my blue card had expired. In the meantime, I had let my managers, other managers go home early for the evening when investigators stopped it. So just to backlist this was.
You returned from what?
Maternity.
And what are you doing to assure this doesn't happen again?
So we now have all of our managers go through a process of obtaining the blue card, stay present throughout all of services.
Can you issue a letter of reprimand for agenda item 23?
Thank you.
And move then second it to issue a letter of reprimand for agenda item 23. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none. I also vote I a letter of reprimand will be issued. Calling agenda item 24, Strip State. Again, so.
Christopher Burman, general manager of Strip State.
Honor about November 30th, 2021, licensee failed to timely submit the name of every person then employed on the licensed premise who is registered with the commission or who is subject to registration on the date and in such manner as directed by the commission, violation of rule 3-82-38.8 of the rules of the liquor commission of the city and county of Honolulu.
So Burman, how would you like to plead? Motion to accept the plea.
Thank you.
And move then second it to accept the no contest plea for agenda item 24. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none. I also vote I the no contest plea is accepted.
Mr. Jacob, what's your recommendation for this?
This is licensee's first violation, recommended fine is $250.
Burman, any comments on this one?
Just did not realize that there was the deadline.
Okay, like my last question, what are you doing to assure this doesn't happen again?
So staying in contact, of course, with our team that represent us legally as well, so that they can sure that we're aware of all that.
You do have, Elton Stelby?
We do.
Right, motion to approve the recommended kind of $250 for agenda.
And move then second it to approve the recommended fine of $250 for agenda item 24. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none. I also vote I a $250 fine will be imposed. And Mr. Burman, my suggestion, big red letters on the calendar, on the computer, everywhere, just put the big red deadlines. Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
Calling agenda item 25, Two Bar and Lounge.
I represent the commission.
Yep, you're here for agenda item 25?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm in the Tamronishi, I'm the managing partner of Talk2OTC, we talk to bar lounge.
It's very lasting.
Onishi, O-N-I-S-H-I.
Can you continue the charge, please?
Honor about December 4th, 2021, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii. Licensee permitted liquor of any kind while in a bottle, glass or other container to be open and readily consumable within the licensed premises before or after hours established by the liquor commission to at 2:11 AM in violation of rule 3-82-38.20 sub B, the rules of the liquor commission of the city and county of Honolulu.
Ms. Ohira, how would you like to plead? Motion.
And move then second it to accept the no contest plea for agenda item 25. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none. I also vote I the no contest plea is accepted.
Mr. Jacob, what's your recommendation?
Again, this violation was witnessed to have occurred at 2:11 AM. The base fine is of licensee's first violation, recommended base fines $500 plus another $110 for the time of 2:11 AM. So the grand total is $610.
Ms. Ohira, any comment or explanation on this charge?
Yes, I'm not trying to justify because it's not just the viable. But I didn't want to let you guys know that we weren't trying to blatantly violate the liquor law. When this violation occurred, it was our first week or two of opening, so we were in our softest mashes. Because of that, we were under this misconception that we weren't really open for business. So at that. So at that time, it was just our close friends there, and we didn't feel the need to have to, you know, pull the liquor by two because we didn't think we were really in business. But now I'm fully aware that as soon as that, like the licenses on your property, you're subject to all the liquor laws, and we haven't had a very many seats.
Get the license.
I think I got it in October, but our first year that we opened was in November, November twenty-second, the first day we.
The recommended fine of six hundred and ten dollars for agenda item twenty-five. And will suspend collection of that for one year. If a similar violation occurs within a one-year period, this penalty will be imposed along with any additional fines.
And move then seconded to approve the recommended fine of six hundred and ten dollars. However, the commission will suspend collection of that for a period of one year, provided no other similar violations occur within that one-year period. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none. I also vote aye. Motion is carried. Fine is approved with a one-year suspension. Thank you, and good luck. Calling agenda item twenty-six, these cut over here. I believe this is our contested case.
No, good afternoon, members of the Commission and Chair Keith Kuchi representing the licensee. We're going to waive reading of the charge in therapy of no contests.
Definitely.
Second.
Then move then seconded to accept the no contest fee for agenda item twenty-six. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none. I also vote aye. The no contest fee is accepted.
Jacob. So I should have heard on March ninth, twenty twenty-one, the licensee violated the mayor's order by not having employees wear masks, allowing people to intermingle and not taking proper contact, facing laws. This is licensee's first violation, the recommended fines five hundred dollars. I will note that I believe it did result in a twenty-four hour shutdown.
Thank you, Mr. Kuchi. Close up on us.
Kuchi, want to try turning off your camera, see if just audio works better. Oh, I just jinxed it thinking we're gonna be on the four five. See, it's my fault.
You can reschedule.
Is there a way to call in for those?
There is. He knows it. That's probably what he's doing now. Yes, the time is four fifty-three, I believe. It just turned up four fifty-three. Yeah.
Did, um, Suzie Bakalung resolve this matter?
Best care Sato is, is he just waiting outside or? What we're probably going to have to do is a recess because I, I don't understand the resolution.
Okay.
Why don't we recess and then we'll figure out how to recall agenda item number one, and hopefully, Mr. Kuchi will be back online by then. Let's have a five-minute recess.
Okay. We're keeping track of the times that we don't go over.
All right, we are now back on the record, and I believe we are going to recall agenda item number one, or are we going to?
We're going to complete number twenty-six.
All right, thank you. All right, do we have Mr. Kuchi online or no?
Yes, we do. I apologize, my laptop went out, so.
No problem.
Keep, keep, yeah, keep.
Spends with the P, correct?
Yes.
Right, so Mr. Kuchi, Mr. Jacob had provided his recommendation along with the factual basis of the charges. Were you able to hear that?
Yes, I was able to hear that. And I'm, my response is, this is a situation where they had incomplete contact tracing, and there were some customers that did not have masks at the time. The one thing I'll mention is they were subject to the twenty-four hour shutdown, and they were visited at least three times during COVID, and one of those violations we had contested and they prevailed on. So I would just lay those out as circumstances.
Do you have any further comment?
Uh, no comment, however, I do note that the investigative report says that they had incomplete contact tracing.
Motion to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for agenda item twenty-six.
Second.
Then move then seconded to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for agenda item twenty-six. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none. I also vote aye. Motion is carried. A five hundred dollar fee will be imposed. Thank you, Mr. Kuchi.
Thank you. Bye.
You were recalling agenda item number one. I'm sorry, thank you, Mr. Jacob.
Thank you.
Uh, agenda item number one, application number two-two dash two-three-five-seven-eight from the Black Shamrock Tavern. Mr. Zibakalam again.
Chair, Vice Chair, members of the Commission, Emmanuel Zibakalam, here on behalf of the Shamrock Tavern, TBA the Black Shamrock Tavern, and the authorized agent for this application. Oh. I believe that there are differences of approach to satisfy the statutory requirements, the statute requirements laid out in twenty-one to fifty-three. So far, it is my understanding, based off the lists submitted, that we have mailed to the lessees and fee owners twice, provided a public notice for these hearings twice. We've mailed to a number of the registered voter lists, which there's obviously a difference in understanding on how to approach the registered voter mailout. That being said, the first avenue that has been explained to me is to redo the entirety of the bailout and submit an affidavit to, after the waiting period. The other option that has been proposed is to allow the comment period open. Have us mail to the remaining voter, registered voters to come up, to meet statutory requirements of the percentages listed under two eighty-one. And those have been the options that have been provided to me. We would, of course, like to move forward with the second option, if available. However, I understand that there are some disagreements regarding how the affidavit would be provided. It's my understanding that we can provide another affidavit showing that we, we mailed to so that they can be looked at with each other and satisfy the entirety of the mailing requirement. That being said, I defer to the administration investigators and the commission on what course may be best.
From Mr. Ryan, I, I would just like to say that I, you know, I believe that the intent and spirit of the statute have been met, and I understand that folks have taken, made a lot of effort, extreme efforts, to make sure that you are providing the notice that's required in the statute. I would prefer to go with the second option and just send them, or send the notice to folks that have not already received the notice because at this point, I believe that there are some people that have gotten two notices. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so in the interest of saving trees and time, I would prefer to go with the second option. Commissioner, do you have any comments?
So I concur. I don't see any reason to do this all over again for a third time. I think the second option is a better one.
I would agree. I think there have been remaining issues when we can.
I agree.
Um, Mr. Ryan, anything to add?
Um, no, I just, just to reiterate, there are a number of approaches that the commission has approved in the past in a situation when there's been a deficiency. One would be to require the applicant to mail out to everyone, which means all the owner lessees and all the registered voters. Uh, the option number two would be to mail out to all of the registered voters, and then the third would be to mail to the registered voters or sufficient number of registered voters to bring the requirements up to the percentage, the required percentage. There would need to be an amended affidavit of mailing filed to reflect this activity, which is unusual, but there's, we would have to record the additional effort in some form or fashion, and we would just figure out the best way to do it on the affidavit of mailing. So we do have both the licensing supervisor and the investigator here, who would want to give them an opportunity to argue. I will say that the commission has gone full and partial in the past. It's a statutory interpretation situation, depending, I guess, on, on circumstances.
So, does this hinge on a statutory interpretation? You're interpreting in one number, and we're interpreting in another number. Is that the issue?
You know, I, I don't believe that I could answer that appropriately. From the conversation that I had with investigator Sato and investigator Takeda, it appears that they do not feel that the, that the affidavit, the second affidavit would meet statutory requirements. I've said it multiple times before, I, I really do want to make sure that we do this in the best way possible. That, that being said, if there is the opportunity for us to negate mailing to people three or four times, I definitely think it's preferential for my client, but I defer to the commission and obviously want to make sure we do this right. And then.
My thinking is that the affidavit is almost form over substance in terms of notice to the minimum required interested person. So I would be inclined to allow option two and accept an affidavit showing that the licensee or the consultant want to do mailouts to the remaining minimum number.
Mr. Sato, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
My name is investigator Daniel Sato. So I'm reading the, the statute. Anytime that the commission fixes a day of a public hearing, all the requirements need to be met based on the mailout. So in this case, the owners and lessees list, the registered voters list, and also the condos need to be filed at the same time. Now, that being said, an affidavit on mailing, the complete master list, and the proof of mailing, and satisfies, needs to satisfy one, two, and three, which is the owners' lessees, the registered voters, and the condos. It doesn't say that you can take number two, which is the registered voters list, and just submit an affidavit based on that. Now, I wouldn't be quite sure how you would fill out an affidavit with the previous numbers because so far that we've seen, all those numbers are different. And the list keeps on changing, or there's disputes on whether or not the requirements, the actual requirements were met.
Well, that's what we're trying to get to the bottom to, and we need to dispense of this because we cannot keep going back and forth on this forever. It seems like that there have been a lot of people that have gotten the mailer, some that's gotten it twice. So I'm, I'm trying, what I'm trying to understand is how many people didn't get it that should have gotten it? And can we just send it to them and to, 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 and that be sufficient for the HRS? Because requiring them to do a process all over again, and again, and again, is very inefficient. So I don't want to get hung up on process and not accomplish what we're set out here to do, which is approve or deny a license. So how many people are we talking about that did not receive notice that should have?
Okay, that, that I would have to take a look at the list again, but overall, what we're trying to say is, if you have a public hearing date for just the owners and lessees, and then you have another public hearing just for the registered voters, you're gonna have people attending or not attending on a different date. And to fulfill the actual requirement for the mailouts is to have one solid date where everybody was mailed out the notice to that one solid date. I don't think it, it doesn't say that we can just, like, take it out and then just mail out one to a select group, like the registered voters only. Says, shall mail to owners and lessees, registered voters, and condominium people. And you have to submit those lists.
So you're, what, so you're saying that they were not sent, so the registered voters were not sent notice? Is that what you're saying? You're saying that they were, that the first two were, were met, but not the third? So you're saying that they were not sent any notice at all?
I'm saying that those statutory requirements were met, and we're basing.
I understand that. I'm trying to understand how they weren't met. That it was just an affidavit of mailing, but not?
From the first two, it appears that the lists weren't even turned in. So you couldn't determine whether or not the voters were mailed a notice.
I'm sorry, I don't understand what's happening. Maybe you can help us, Mr. Zibakalam.
And, and I, I understand the point that investigator Sato is making. In regards to the statement in regards to the list not being submitted, it, it really does come down to nuance and, and the procedure. For the registered voter list, the current procedure is to submit, and this is state law because there's only certain groups that are allowed to pull registered voter lists, obviously to protect individuals. So we apply to the county to get the list. The list comes back, it does come back in hard copy. And then from that list, we are supposed to mail. And then the, the difference is, I, I believe that the investigators are saying that the list that wasn't submitted was a pared-down list to just within five hundred feet because when the county provides it, they provide proud precincts. So your list that comes from the county will have five to ten thousand people on it, and then you have to go through, find the addresses.
Address.
And, and that's what we did the first time, I'm sorry, the second time. And then it occurred to us as we were going through this process with investigator, together with investigator Sato, that as I provided last time, there are instances where a single space can have multiple addresses. And the reason that I brought it up last time and provided, you know, I, I highlighted the ones that were with the doubles and such stuff because I didn't want to make sure that you guys knew that they were there. And then provided the affidavit was because, you know, USPS doesn't always work the same way as the county. The county doesn't always work the same way as the state. And so there was a mailer that was delivered, the individual signed an affidavit saying that he received it because he's one of the two people that live at that address that we mailed to. It didn't have the specific, so it was nine oh eight, but it's also nine oh four listed, so on the, on the actual building, it can say nine oh eight, but it can also be nine oh four. So we mailed to nine oh eight, and there were a certain amount of people in nine oh eight. And so, I mean, I, I'm entirely guessing here, but I'm imagining a USPS worker most likely took the ones that said nine oh eight and put them inside the, the mailboxes. And, you know, that's all just kind of a glimpse of the different structures in regards to this registered voter mailing list that we do. So I believe that, you know, not to go too far down a tangent, based off the numbers that were provided by, of, investigated together, we're looking at a difference of approximately two hundred and twenty-five, if not, you know, slightly more, mailers out of. more than that, if I can say lightly. Um, and, and they're all registered voters. I, I will say that. And, and the reason for the mix up was there was a building that had an address and under that address, there were no registered voters listed. But in DPP, there's a separate address that you can get to, um, where you have to actually, where you type it in rather than clicking on the parcel. And those had registered voters. And so that area is what we missed. It was essentially a large building and then a, a couple, uh, uh, I'd be maybe one or two in the 100 feet. Um, and so that's what I believe we're trying to remedy at this point. Um, however, I, I defer to the commission. And that, I was just trying to help clarify kind of how that, uh, what the difference was. So we're looking at about 225 mailers for the second
Can I make a comment?
Yes.
Because I, I think I neglected to put this on the record. Through all this multiple, multiple date setting, uh, we have received one letter in support, zero protests, and no one has appeared, uh, to protest the granting of this license, unlike some other instances I can mention that, uh, in recent history. Also, I, I do not believe that this is a situation where the, uh, the recipient owner lesses are gonna come on a certain date for a public hearing and then you mail out come on a, on a separate date. By virtue of, uh, this is the reason why public hearings are continued to a date certain, so that you, you receive the written, the initial written notice. If there is continuance, there's uh, multiple examples when public hearings have had to be continued. The fact that it is announced at the, uh, public meeting with a date certain provides the subsequent notice. There's not a requirement to remail out to all those people when you continue to a date certain is handled by way of the announcement at a public meeting. So there's a concern about, uh, owners unless he's shown up on one date, which no one has, and, uh, the brand new registered voter showing up on another date. Um, I would, uh, treat the, uh, the, the final continuance, if that occurs, as of being a unified date for everybody by virtue of how it's handled here, but it must be to a date certain.
All right. So are you okay with that explanation that it's a, that there's a discrepancy of approximately 225 registered voters that did not receive notice yet?
At this point, I would defer, yes, to court, court counsel on this because as far as the licensing section is concerned, we, we only can read the statute one way. We, we can't make interpretations or, um, you know, do half of it versus what was written. Um, if, if that's the case, then we're, we're gonna always see corporation counsel to-
I understand. And I understand that what you're doing is difficult as well. This is a, this is not an easy statute to interpret and it's, um, and it was written a long time ago and things were a little different here. So, you know, I, I appreciate your guys' work and time and effort in doing this as well.
I'm also hesitant because this, this actual premises was, um, taking it up to the Supreme Court before about the same, almost the same or similar issue about mailouts. And there is, um, actual, um, opinions out there regarding mailouts and the, how specific they are.
Um, Does court counsel have anything you'd like to add? Okay. All right. And so did we determine a date certain, Mr. Zibakalam, that would work for you?
With option?
Yes, I think we're all in agreement that option two is where we're heading, um, because I don't want to see this drag on much longer if we, if, if we feel that enough notice has been given to enough people.
Same two dates, unfortunately during the, the time we were outside, the investigators were unable to
So, Ms. I, do you have any opinion on what date certain would be appropriate?
Um, I guess my concern is that right now we know that we can provide the letter tomorrow for pickup. So whether or not the applicant can, uh, generate the mailout to those 200 some odd registered voters, it would be his responsibility. I guess the concern is if we, uh, come back in 45 days or whatever, or October 27th, and then there's a further, there's a further disagreement with respect to, um, the supplemental mailout. I guess that would be my concern. I, I don't know, you know, I don't know that, that if we continue one week so we could take a look at that, whether that would, um, uh, be something that's cured at this point. And I, um, whether there'd be a perpetual disagreement between the applicant and licensing in terms of any kind of count.
I could make a comment. I understand this, but it's a difficult situation. Um, and I don't want to do anything hasty. Um, I, I would be open to a week's continuance. Um, if the commissioners felt that corporation counsel could provide a, uh, a ruling or whatever is necessary. If you feel is necessary for, for something like this, I, I understand, but I, I would request that that time be added, um, to our temporary license, just, just to allow the continued service. Um, that being said, if we feel that, um, option two is an option that's amenable at this time, obviously that's, uh, something we would like.
If you set it for the end of October, that's the concern about the formal affidavit. I'm, I just want to make sure it's compliance with the head town. Or whether the statute's been complied with.
Agree with that, of course, of action.
With that, then I think that the 27th would provide, uh, if, if, it can be generated tomorrow, the 27th would provide me until next week, Wednesday, I have a, to have the mailout go up. And that's something that we would be able to accommodate even with the delay. Okay?
Can I have a type of, can I have a, um, motion, please?
Should be the continue agenda item one till, uh, seven, 2022, public hearing kept open.
I move then second it to continue agenda item number one, application number two, two dash two, three, five, seven, eight, through October 27th, 2022 with the public help, uh, public hearing kept open. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none. I also hope I motion is carried. Application is, uh, continued. Thank you.
Right. We'll email you as soon as the letter is-
Thank you, Mr. Sato. All right. Uh, moving on to other business, calling agenda item 27, liquor administrator, Ms. I, anything to add?
Um, nothing. Uh, I earlier circulated, uh, the stand, the usual weekly report. Uh, I will note that I'm keeping an eye for the posting of, uh, city council. My, uh, my belief is that, uh, the resolution involving, uh, various issues surrounding, uh, public trust and the liquor commission, I anticipate will be first reading on Wednesday, September 7th. As soon as I confirm that setting, I will notify the commission, uh, of that fact.
Thank you, Mr. I. Um, all right, agenda item 28, liquor commission.
This, this particular item is a request pursuant to the 38117.4. Uh, the, uh, the city is preparing to roll out the outdoor dining, um, pilot program. The principal, um, the, the main permit will be issued by Department of Transportation Services. A licensee who wishes to participate after obtaining that permit will come to us to get the liquor service permit similar to the outdoor sidewalk dining program that was conducted during COVID. This is, I, I guess, a two-year pilot program. Uh, I am requesting, uh, the ability to approve those, uh, liquor permits, administratively without a hearing. We will always retain the discretion to refer a matter back to the commission for approval if we think it's appropriate. But that's what, um, this request is.
Okay, and, um, let me ask this, and you may or not have an answer to it. Um, but for those, um, licensees that were approved for outdoor, um, consumption during, during the pandemic and under an emergency order, um, are they in a holdover status? Are there, is there, are they being allowed to serve alcohol in the outdoor area that they were approved to serve during the-
They'll have to reapply.
Okay, but I'm asking in the interim before, so for right now, because the program hasn't started, emergency order has ended. Is there any way for them to continue service in those areas while they are applying? Because I, what I don't want to see is that they're, they're having to create these spaces over and over in order to avoid violations. Can we-
The, the issue that we, we, um, had to sort of overcome is that when the emergency orders terminated, it basically eliminated that, that the, the COVID temporary outdoor sidewalk dining.
That's the purpose of my question.
Yeah, it, it terminated. So this process, I mean, once, um, my understanding is that the permit that's issued by DTS will be six months in duration, which is fairly similar to, um, I, I guess you're treating it kind of like, uh, what a street permit is like in terms of term. The liquor permit will be co-terminous with the, the DTS permit. I do not believe, we have discussed that once, uh, uh, an applicant has made a submission and they come for renewal, that they will not be submitting stuff from scratch over and over again. Uh, I don't know what DTS plans to do with that. Uh, and I, I will note that, uh, interestingly enough, the enforcement arm for the main permit will be DP, uh, planning and permitting. I'm sure they're really happy about that.
Have we, have we already, have we sent any kind of communication to licensees that were dining outside that were approved during COVID era about this coming through and that they need to reapply if they want to keep using those areas?
We're waiting for the, the official rollout to be announced, which we understand will be, um, mid-September was the initial plan. And I believe the initial rollout is going to be announced to the Office of Economic Revitalization. As soon as we have that information, we've committed to email blast our licensees and put it up on our website, but we do not want to get ahead of the lead agencies.
Okay. Um, then can we, I, I guess, I don't know the appropriate way to do this, guys, but can we let the investigators know that, that to not issue violations for that until we are sure that they are not reapplying? They do not intend to reapply and they're, they're in violation. I don't want to knock people while they're trying to apply for this outdoor space because we have, basically we have a gap. See that? We have the end of the emergency order and the beginning of this program. We still have licensees that are using those outdoor areas. I don't want to see them, I mean, obviously they're in violation now if they're still using those areas without permission. So I, I don't want to see a bunch of complaints coming in because there's this gap in coverage. So I would like to have some sort of proactive communication. Are we going to be telling them to not use those areas? Are we gonna tell them they need to submit an application? Um, I, 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 I see this as an issue that we could avoid if we plan on it.
My understanding is, uh, when the emergency orders terminated, there's a number of permissions that went down with it. Cocktails to go was one of them.
Right.
Uh, there, I mean, there, there's a, a number of things that we, uh, advise licensees that one thing we encourage them, if, if a particular permission was important to them, that they needed to approach, uh, mayor or city council to have them reinstated or, or, uh, their state legislators. I, I don't, I think they were slow to do that. Uh, as, as, with respect to licensees who are current use, uh, currently using, uh, the sidewalk areas, I am not confident that they're doing so with liquor service.
Okay. Um, Commissioners, do you have any?
I think if I could try to recapture your concern, Chairman, is that it seems to be there's a technical violation if a licensee is serving alcohol and light consumption on the city sidewalk where it was previously allowed during the emergency orders. Um, and I think what turn is to make sure we exercise reasonable discretion-
Yes.
On the enforcement side and perhaps warnings would be sufficient. Having said that, I don't want to micromanage the administration of, who believe the communication with the licensees is absolutely essential. I'm not sure how to do it. Um, if it was me, um, having said I don't want to micromanage, I would probably warn and, um, post something on a website and do some kind of reach out. But other than that, um, going to the merits of the agenda item, I just have one question. What criteria would administration have in sending back an application to this commission for a hearing on a permit request? Has that been established?
Um, Not really. It's just that with all the, the delegated, uh, authorities, we, we retain that discretion for, to put it back to you always. What, when you normally see something referred back to you, one is like a street closure, which this does not cover. Two is if we believe that perhaps restrictions or conditions may be appropriate to the ward of that approval, we do not have that authority. We would have to bring it back to you. I don't know what they would be. And I mean, the, uh, and you'll see once, uh, DTS releases the, the main permit, uh, documents, there are a lot, they're, they're fairly specific about a, a number of features with, uh, no, no music or entertainment outside, uh, the circumference around hydrants, uh, ADA. I mean, it's, it's really, really specific. So, um, I'm hoping that there will be, uh, a relief to licensees that it'll be absolutely clear what the, the dimensions and the kind of requirements they need to meet. Because if something happens to the main permit, we make it so that the liquor permit automatically will, will expire at the same time as the other one.
And, and I'm happy to delegate to the administration so we can shorten our meetings on our voluntary time.
Okay, so do we need any action on this?
I, I need you to take action on that delegation, just improve the delegation.
So your motion is to delegate?
Motion to delegate authority to the administrator or delegate to prove permits related to the city's outdoor dining pilot program without a hearing.
Second. I move then second it to approve the request for agenda item 28. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none. I also hope I motion is carried and, uh, delegation of authority is granted. All right, seeing as there's no other business meeting as a adjournment.